And we can hear you.
Good.
Okay, let's see if Brett's here. I don't see him, but we can start the meeting. I'll call the Tremont Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, January 25 to order at 6:03 PM. Roll call, Jeff Young.
Here.
Beth Scott.
Here.
Lawson Wilson.
I'm here.
Myself, Mark Good. Brett, are you here? Maybe, maybe he'll be joining us later. Okay. Do we want to make a motion to excuse or not excuse his absence, or just wait and see what happens here?
Let's wait and see what happens.
Yeah, if we haven't heard from him, I would assume that he's coming, because.
I know, I know he picked up his packet, so.
Okay.
Some, sometimes he's a little late because of work issues, so.
Totally.
I don't see any reason to adjust the agenda. Anybody have any difference of opinion there? Hearing nothing, we'll move on in the minutes. They look fine to me. I don't know if anybody else had any issues.
I saw something.
Okay.
In, let's see, where is this? Paragraph five, I guess, talking about the pointy head site plan review application is on the top of the back page. The second sentence. It says, Mr. Young commented that CEO to the representing attorney indicating the item would be tabled. I think there's just a word missing.
Oh, yes, yeah, you're right.
And Jeff, I think you were talking about the CEO sending an email to the representing attorney or something like that, communicating with the representing attorney.
Yeah.
That's my recollection.
So how should we amend the minutes so that it's.
Commenting to CEO to.
Complete thought. Maybe just have a, Mr. Young commented that the CEO communicated with the representing attorney indicating the item would be tabled. In the future, that should go out after the item has been officially tabled.
No. If I understand you correctly, you said that Mr. Young commented to the representing attorney?
No, I think Mr.
Well, I don't know. His comment was that John Larson, the CEO.
His comment was that the CEO communicated with the representing attorney.
You okay with that, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes from January 11th, so that in paragraph or in section five, to change the second sentence, which is referencing pointy head site plan review application, to read, Mr. Young commented that the CEO communicated with the representing eternity, indicating the item would be tabled.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second on the table to amend, to approve the minutes as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four zero. Okay, moving on. I assume that we have Mr. Benson here, is that correct? There he is. Tom, do you. Unme, yes.
Before we dive into the next one, which is the amendment number three to Robert and Julia Spars subdivision, is that right?
Yes.
I want to refuse myself from this. My wife is employed by the applicant, so I got a conflict of interest and should refuse myself.
Okay, well, appreciate you calling attention to that, and yes, I think that's a wise move.
Yeah.
So we still have a quorum, so we can proceed, Tom.
Okay. This is.
Can I ask a quick question to Tom? Are the Spars involved in this at all, or is it just it's Smiths?
It's just the two lot, one and two of Rick Smith's lots.
So they bought one and two out of the Spars subdivision?
Correct.
So Spars have nothing to do with this application?
That's correct.
Because I'd have a conflict then. Okay.
But you're okay, right, Jeff?
As long as Spars not involved, I'd have a conflict if they were involved, because they, we represented them at one time in our firm.
I understand, Tom, and that's correct, right? Spars are not involved.
The only extent they're involved is they're in a joiner, but they're not involved with this lot land at all.
Okay.
I think you're okay, Jeff. I don't see an issue there.
I think I'm okay too.
You're okay, Jeff. Tom, could you briefly explain what's going on here?
Okay, you guys should have the original Spars subdivision in your packet, number Plan 1455, recorded at the registry. It's a 1974 plan.
Okay, I'm looking at it right now, yes.
Rick bought lots one and two per that plan.
Okay.
And I've got a gift to date here. They divided out in book 7125699. The garage apartment straddled the lot one, two line. They own both lots, but I guess for insurance purposes, they reconfigured lot two to be a 2.2 acre lot per deed 7125, page 699. That was in, I believe, 2017. No, it looks like May of 21, and in the meantime, now, we're here at present. At the time they did that division, we checked with the town and we did not need to, the town said you do not need to go through an amendment, so. All the towns here on the island and in the area, if any time now you change a subdivision, we come for an amendment, which I've brought in a number of them here lately. So now they're going to sell lot two, but their buyer wanted to reconfigure the lots, the lot line slightly. So we went from a 2.2 acre lot number two to a 2.5 acre lot number two. And so we're here for an amendment to make this change official. And we'll have a lot one of 14 acres, lot two of 2.5. And that gives you a total, the original total was 16 and a quarter. I come up with 16.5 is just a variation on the high water, I think, and so here we are at present. We've just made a slight variation of the 2.2 acre lot.
So the lot one is now the larger lot, correct?
Yes, it is.
2.5 acres.
No, lot one is 14 acres.
14, okay, sorry.
Yes, that takes in, there's a new house on the northwest corner of the lot, the barn and the remaining land. So lot two will have a 30 foot right away through lot one to the Laddy Cove Road.
Is all this shown somewhere on another drawing?
Yeah, you should have amendment three.
Amendment two. That's one we did recently.
Yeah, that was quite a bit to the south, one of the Spars children, I guess.
Yeah. Didn't understand why we had that one, that's.
Sorry.
You should have amendment three, that's the, the actual plan. These, these other plans are just to give you the backstory on what's happened in the past.
I don't think we have it.
I don't have it.
I don't.
I don't have it. John?
Yes.
We don't have amendment three.
It should have been one, two, three pieces of paper, three plans.
We have three plans.
And one of them says amendment three.
Mine doesn't.
Mine doesn't. Where, where in the plan does it say it? What am I missing?
Bottom right hand corner.
I have a plan showing revision. Plan of subdivision and amendment two.
I don't have a three.
Everything here we have is old. There's nothing new.
How many pieces of paper do you have?
What, what pieces do you want us to count down?
Yeah, exactly.
I have four plans.
Lawson, Brett, do you have a amendment three?
Nope.
No, I don't, I don't see it either.
Oh, Brett's here, okay. That record showed that Brett is joining us at 6:15. Hi Brett.
6:07, but okay.
6:07.
Yeah.
I have 6:15, oh, you go out here at 6:07, got you. I don't see how we can proceed without that plan.
I can email it to somebody and can they forward it around?
I don't have a printer here.
Unless Mr. Larson can share the screen, if you mail it to him and he shares the screen.
Okay.
Can you do that, Mr. Larson?
Trying.
Well, it explains why I was so confused. We didn't even have the plan.
What is your email, John?
Send it to jlarson192@gmail.
And of course, one of the things we look at for completeness is that the plan was submitted in two copies, not more than blah, 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 so.
Oh, I, I believe I submitted large copies as well as 11 by 17s.
I'm sure you did.
But we'll see if we can get around it here.
Okay.
That come through, John?
I'm waiting.
J Larson, at J Larson 192@gmail.com.
Yes.
I've sent it twice. It says that plan.
Hold on.
Okay.
Tom, oh, waiting, is there a structure on this new lot?
Uh, yeah, the new lot has a garage apartment, a house, and a cottage, yes. Those have been there quite some time. Is there another email I can send to?
No, that should work, just bear with me.
Okay.
I just didn't want to lose this connection.
Okay. Mark, is John, John the host?
He's going to be the host until the public hearing, and then Jesse's taking over.
Is Jesse on, on at the moment?
He might be listening in, but I don't know what he's doing. He, I know he couldn't do it from the beginning of the meeting, so.
I just logged in.
Okay.
A few minutes ago.
Did you know, did you hear the problem?
No.
We don't have the plan for the subdivision amendment.
The new plan?
Yes.
Okay.
And so maybe if you don't mind hosting, save Mr. Larson some the trouble, and maybe Tom Benson can email you the plan and you can share it on the screen.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
What is your email, Jesse?
You can send it to manager@tremont.maine.gov.
That's why I asked if Jesse was on, Mark. We have a lot of people for the public hearing. Should we shift the script, the agenda around and take that next and come back to this later in the evening?
I have a feeling Jesse will have that right away.
I have it, just one second.
Thank you. Bringing up for everybody there, Lawson?
Yeah, I've got apples for everyone. It's a pretty crunchy one, too.
There we go. Okay, Tom.
All right, so you see lot two, there's a dashed, it's going to be hard probably for you guys to see detail, but there's a dashed line within lot two, that's the original deeded lot, and we've adjusted it slightly to the dark line, which is kind of an irregular, has a little ear sticking off the upper right. So that's the present lot two that they proposed to convey, along with the 30 foot right away, leaving the northeast corner headed north and then kind of southeasterly.
Okay, and there's the house right, right there on lot two, right?
Yeah.
And the garage.
Garage apartment, then there's a barn. There's another house up on the northwest corner. I don't know when that was built, but that's not shown on here. But we're doing a subdivision amendment, so I don't know if buildings are real critical.
Anybody have any questions at this point? So we ready to move on to determine the completeness of this application? I guess so.
Sure. Yep.
Okay, as you know, we don't need a motion on each one of these things, so we'll go through them. Stop me if you have any comments. Location map adequate to show relationship to adjacent properties? Looks okay? That's a yes?
Yes.
Copy of tree, any existing subdivision in proximity of the proposed subdivision? This is all the same subdivision, correct? Mr. Benson?
Yes, this is within the Spars subdivision, and I believe everyone does have the original Spars subdivision from 74.
Okay.
So there are no other subdivisions in the proximity other than this Spars subdivision.
Yeah, that's a yes?
Yeah.
Locations and names of any existing and proposed streets? I think we got them. It's hard for me to see, the detail is quite small here. So if any of you with better eyes can correct me, but it looks okay.
There are no new roads.
Okay, no new roads, existing roads noted on plan, okay. John did write that down, sorry, John. Any boundaries of zoning districts with designations? It's noted on the plan.
Yes, the 250 foot shoreline zone delineated on the plan.
Okay. Outline a proposed subdivision? That's on the plan. Other required permits? John, there's no other permit, permits required here?
No.
He's all set?
It's all set.
Okay, so that's not applicable? Preliminary plan shall be submitted in two copies and not more than 100 feet to an inch, introducing eight copies, the plan reduced to a size eight and a half by 11, or 11 by 17. I'm sure that, John, he did submit those, right?
Yes, I have the big ones.
Okay. We all sat there, folks.
We have all eight copies, John?
Really?
Somebody say something.
Yes, I said, do we have eight copies?
I can't make eight copies of the big plan.
Do we have eight copies of the eight and a half by 11 or eight?
Yes, yes, yes. I apologize, it should have been in your package with those other subdivision plans.
So we do have eight copies, okay. We're okay there. The following information shall be shown on our application, proposed name of subdivision, name of town, and assessor's tax map and lot numbers. I saw it on the application. There's no proposed name, I mean, it's still the same name.
Is this applicable?
Well, that's a good question. What do you think?
Who are you asking?
You, Jeff, you, you asked a question. I mean, do you think it's not applicable?
Well, we're not doing a new subdivision here, we're still amending a line of an existing subdivision.
Correct. So you're saying that's not applicable? Anybody disagree with that? We do have the tax, the tax map and lot numbers are applicable, and we do have that on the, the application itself.
It's in the notes on the plan.
Yeah, it's got all that stuff. So I think it's a yes, right? Anybody disagree? I know Jeff says not applicable. It's on there, whether we need it or not.
Part of the ordinance.
Go ahead, John.
I say it's part of the ordinance. This checklist that you have, submission requirements are part of the ordinance.
Yep, and we have it. Evidence of, yes. I thought I heard somebody say something. Okay. On plan and part of application, okay. Evidence of right title and interest in property.
That's in the notes as well.
So the latest one is the quick claim deed with covenant?
There's two deeds. Two deeds, 7122492 and 7125699.
7122492. And what was the other one, 722?
7125699.
Yes.
Yep.
Looked good, everybody?
Yes.
Okay, we're okay there. Field survey of boundary lines of the tract, giving complete description data by bearings and distances made and survived by a licensed land surveyor. The plans shall indicate the type of monument to be set and found at each corner. I assume that's on here, though it's hard to see. I see the boundaries. Those are, I take it there at the borders.
Yes, we've set pins at the, the 2.5 acre lot. We found a pipe down near the southwest corner of lot two, but the rest of them are pins we set.
Okay, I think we're all set there. The date, the plan was prepared, North Aero Graphic Map Scale, names and addresses of the owner of record, subdivider, and individual or company who prepared the plan, names of adjoining property owners. Seems to be all on there. Proposed lot lines and approximate dimensions and lot areas. Yeah. It's there. Proposed names of any roads numbered assigned to lots, there's no new roads proposed, so that's not applicable. Location, names, and present width, if any existing and or proposed streets, easements, building lines, parks, and other open spaces on or adjacent to the subdivision. So on the original plan. We okay there, folks?
Yes.
The width and location of any streets or public improvements shown upon the official map and comprehensive plan, if any, within subdivision. Not applicable. Any parcel of land to be dedicated to public use in the conditions of such dedication. Not applicable. The location of any open space to be preserved and its description of proposed improvements and management. Not applicable. Names and addresses of owners of record of adjacent property, including a property directly across an existing public street. That's on there, right?
John usually prepares a joiner's list from the top.
I have a, I have a butters list.
Okay, there is that, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
I do have the joiners on the plan, I just don't have the addresses.
Okay, but we do have a butters list, where it has the addresses, so we're okay there. Boundaries of any flood hazard areas in the 100-year flood elevation delineated on the plan, if any portion of the subdivision is in a flood-prone area.
I show that on the plan. It does not affect the buildings, it's quite close to high water.
Okay. Board, any comments there? Otherwise, I think that's okay. Contour lines at 10-foot interval, intervals showing elevations to mean sea level. John, you put down not applicable, why is that not applicable?
Because everything that's there is in existence, it was all on the original plan.
Okay. Subsurface disposal systems, test pit analyses?
Yes, existing systems, they're all installed.
Okay. Centralized or shared subsurface sewage disposal system? That's not applicable because of that, right?
They don't have a centralized or shared.
Shared, okay, it's not shared, there's individual, okay. Evidence of adequate groundwater supply and quality may be requested by the board and shall be submitted by a well driller if the proposed subdivision is within the watershed of a lake, the phosphate concentration impact on groundwater must be determined. Well, this should be not applicable, right?
Well, he's showing, he's showing the wells on the plan.
Understand, but it's not within the watershed of a lake. Is it?
I, hey? I think they're, my sense is, I have to go back to the Greg, but I'm wondering if there ought to be a semicolon after driller, so they're actually sort of two points maybe, instead of one big long sentence, I don't know.
Well, yeah.
Let me go back to the code here.
You grabbing the ordinance?
Yeah, I'm trying.
I think you're probably right, yeah.
Tom, is the well in septic system shown on the plan? I can't see.
It is, it is.
They're both there?
They're both there.
Okay.
I think there are two, I think there are two points. Mark, but I also wonder. I mean, they're not. We're not inclined to request anything from a well driller, right?
Yeah, it says maybe, yeah, and there's an existing well, there's nothing new.
Yeah.
So I think yes is probably the correct answer, then.
Yeah.
Okay. Copy of the most, oh, sorry, anybody could? Copy of the most recent deed for the parcel, a copy of all deed restrictions, covenants, easements, and right-of-way?
The covenants are all listed in those two deeds.
Right. And what is this revocable license agreement?
I'll have Rick explain that.
It sounds like it's a consent agreement or something.
If Rick wants to explain that, that would be better. I was not involved with that.
Hello, this is Rick Smith. Revocable license agreement relates to the neighbor to the north or to the west, she may put it, it's just, we have a we have we have an agreement with them whereby we have, when we built the pond, they asked us to extend the pond under their property. So we did such, and we created a little garden area there. So we went into revocable license to allow us to use that area as a garden. That's with the Stewarts, Dave Stewart. But it has nothing to do with this lot here, it only deals with the lot one.
Okay. Board members? Jeff, you looked at plenty of these deeds in your time, you okay with that?
I'm not going to pass judgment that way, I'm going to pass judgment that it doesn't affect the lot that the subdivision divide, I'm not going to pass opinion on license itself, but it looks from the plan that I can tell on the screen, this lot doesn't affect the licensed area. Is that right?
That's correct, Jeff.
So I'm not sure why this was submitted, except it affects the original lot?
Well, that's a good question, Tim, we didn't know if it needed to be submitted, but because, because it was an adjustment to the lot in order to sell, to sell it, we thought we'd better cover every base. Is that correct, Tom?
Well, the towns have now, which I think is a state ordinance, but they've started, if you change a line in the subdivision, you have to go back for an amendment. So if you change any lot lines within an approved subdivision, you come for an amendment.
Correct, and we changed, also we did with the lot line, because we moved it ever so slightly, which basically increased the lot from 2.2 acres to 2.5 acres. Now, the original lot was much larger, of course, lot, lot two, but that was changed. It was originally done in 2015, as Tom mentioned, I don't think it was recorded finally until 2017, was it, Tom?
Yes, I believe in that area.
Right.
So board, this condition has been met in everybody's mind? Yeah. Okay. Where am I, field survey, is that correct? See? Field survey of boundary lines of the tract, giving complete descriptive data by bearings and distances made and certified by a licensed land surveyor? Plan show, indicate, oh, we did that one, didn't we? Okay.
I think we're on page four.
We're on page four, not page two.
Sorry, thank you, guys, okay. Which one are we on, then?
We did the first one.
Okay.
It's the letter T.
We're on, on which one?
T.
T. Okay, down there, sorry, I flipped this over and I got all confused. I heard it do two. We did that one? Evidence? We did that one, okay. T, a copy of the most recent deed, so now we're on page four, okay. Sorry, folks. A copy of any covenants or deed restrictions that cover all or parts of lots and subdivision. We're okay there?
Yep.
Copy of that portion of the state soil survey covering subdivision. John has marked not applicable. An adequate stormwater management plan must be provided. It's just a something, amendment in the law, so we're okay there. Location and size of existing proposed subsurface sewage systems, well, culverts and drainage ways on or adjacent to property to be subdivided. Not applicable. Determination must be made whenever a subdivision is situated in whole or in part within 250 feet of any wetland, great pond, or river, or within their watershed, that the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality or unreasonably affect the shoreline of that water body. Not applicable. A map identifying all freshwater wetlands regardless of size, streams, and or brooks within or abutting the proposed subdivision. I really can't tell from the size of this map, are there any wetlands on there, Tom?
I don't believe there are many, Rick can probably weigh in a little better. There aren't of any size, he's cleared most of this, within most of this lot out.
We're also about existing development. Existing, the properties have been fully developed.
So you're saying not applicable?
I'm saying not applicable.
Everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Okay. An estimate of the amount and type of vehicular traffic to be generated on daily basis, that peak hours, not applicable. A statement of adequate financial capacity to complete project, again, not applicable. Somebody want to make a motion to find that the for the Robert, the amendment to the Robert and Julia sparse subdivision? Be found complete?
Also move.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
The only comment I'll have is, you know, we know Tom really well and so forth, but we should be mindful that if we do see, if I see the printed printed plan, if we did see something that we're missing, we might address it at a later date. And I'm sure Tom would submit it.
I understand what you're saying, but should that be part of the motion, then?
Tom, do you have a problem with that?
No, no, you don't have this printed plan in front of you.
I mean, I know you've heard thorough and you've answered all our questions, but I can't see it on the screen.
I'm glad I'm not the only one, Jeff.
Yeah, I'll make a part of the motion, the second who doesn't have an objection.
I don't even remember, who seconded, Brett?
I think that's good.
I did.
Okay, you don't have any objection, Dan?
No.
Okay. Let's try it again, Jeff.
I'll move that we find the application complete, but reserve the right to request any changes to the plan that fine, does not reflect what was answered tonight.
Second, somebody? I'll second it, then. Motion seconded on the table to approve the subdivision as stated by amendment, as stated by Mr. Young, any discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, got that out of the way. Lawson, I guess you can come back now.
It's good to, good to be back.
Okay. Now, public hearing. Before we go to that, I had a question for Mr. Dewan. See here?
Yes, I am.
As I was reading through the recommendations here, I was a bit puzzled why you made some recommendations about things that we already do that are already part of the process, and my only, the conclusion I came to is you only considered the land use ordinance and not the site plan review ordinance, is that correct?
Which specifically are you referring to?
Well, for one thing, page four. CTR recommends the following review process, sketch plan review, site visit, feedback to applicant, peer review.
I must admit, I'm not familiar with the intricacies of the review process. And if, we offer those in the spirit of making the process smoother and more transparent, if that's the way you do it right now, then I would say, then they probably don't need to be considered. I didn't go into a lot of detail in looking through the land use ordinance, those particular references. I know that the recommendations that we made, I think are in compliance with generally accepted professional practice, at least how I've seen it work in Maine.
Yeah, thank you, you know, my only concern, there's significant standards in this, plan review ordinance, have they entered here? And I'm concerned that the fact that this has led to some misconceptions on the part of the public as to what you're thinking that maybe our artists have deficiencies that are really there.
Well, I guess we put that out there as a point of discussion. If you and the citizens in Tremont feel that they're adequate right now, then we probably don't need any further discussion. You know, I know that when we have brought a lot of projects before, other planning boards and other parts of the state, that's a process that we found to be very helpful in terms of getting applicants and town officials and planning board members all on the same page, so that it expedites the process.
Thank you. Okay. I'll call the public hearing to order, I guess it's what? 654, 653? I'm going to ask everybody to please I'm going to ask everybody to please be brief. We have a lot of work to do tonight if we're going to try to get something before send the selectmen before the March seventh deadline. And please be brief. Please stay on topic. And the topic is campground standards. And we've got a lot, had a lot of discussion at our last public hearing, I hope we don't hear some of the same things over and over again. Thank you. Bessie, are you with us here?
Yes. So if everybody could follow the same procedure as last week's meeting, if anybody wants to say anything, use the raise your hand function. And I will mark or I will call your name when it's your turn to speak.
Oh, I see, Mr. Bear has his hand up first, okay? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While we are interested in this, we do have an item on the agenda that follows this, and I'm not sure that you're going to actually take it up tonight or not. Could, but I just get two minutes of the board's time to discuss whether they're going to make a determination of pointy head. I understood as of this afternoon, you hadn't heard from the town attorney. So I'm not sure that we're in any different position than we were two weeks ago when we got together. I just that there probably are a lot of people who couldn't sign off if you're not going to take that up tonight.
I understand, okay. To my knowledge, we have not received anything from the attorney as far as an opinion, despite being promised that we would get that. And I apologize once again, Mr. Bear. And as you know, the moratorium is still in effect, at least for a few more days, to the twenty-ninth, I believe. So I don't see where we have any choice but to table this at this point.
Can we ask that we be on the agenda for a completeness review for February eighth, then? That would be following the end of the moratorium.
Yes, I think we can do that, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I saw someone else a minute ago. They seemed to have disappeared. Was it? Okay, Mr. Ross?
Yeah, thanks, um, yeah, sorry, I don't have a camera. I don't like, my PC doesn't have a camera on it that works. Um, yeah, I hope I don't go off topic, I'm trying not to. But with campground regulations and being in the because we're not defining what light commercial and, and the essence of sort of a, whatever the residential area. I was just thinking that, you know, to meet the essence of residential in a in a residential business area, I think the campground should be limited in occupancy and it should be the same occupancy as would be if you had properties owned residences in a property. And so, for example, how to calculate it, you know, you could take the properties being, the campground's going on and subtract forty thousand square feet because that's the primary residence. And then the rest of it, you sort of divide up into it by forty thousand square feet and see how many residents would have been there. And then look at what the mean number of occupants in a residence in Tremont are, which I assume is going to be something less than three. And I just, just looking around, it's hard to say, but I would think that you would know that answer. And you can get an idea of what what the occupancy of that land would be and to keep it in sort of the same characteristics of what a residence would be. And an example, so if we took the AWL twenty acres, you subtract forty thousand square feet off of that and divided by forty thousand square feet, you get basically, it'd be equivalent to twenty residences. And if you assume that there's three, the average in Tremont is three people per residence, that would be limited, the occupancy of that property to sixty. And I would think then that would stay within the characteristic of what a residential area would be like. That makes sense. And nothing's saying that you have to, you know, spread them out evenly, there was discussion last week on whether to, you want to consolidate things. It's just on a whole property, you would restrict the number of people on there to be on the same characteristic of what a residential area, you know, the resident, if that was made into residences and what that would be, you know, typically like. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, thank you. It looks like we have Mr. Mansa Lilly.
I just wanted to say that I don't think that restricting them to the size of a residential use is going to be profitable for anybody trying to pursue putting in a campground. One of the great characteristics of a campground is being able to have a sense of community. And, you know, a lot of people, you know, they like that, they like to be able to meet the neighbors and interact and do things. I am going to say, you know, generally I'm for campgrounds. I think it was a great thing growing up, I always went to Moosehead Lake, went to Rockwood, to Old Mill Campground every year. However, rather than say the size of the lots, if you're going to do something, you know, I can see, you know, the buffering that AWL proposed, that's great. I think that's a great idea. But starting to restrict the size, you make it so it's not, I mean, you're not even worth, it's not even worth it to anybody that would invest in it. And there are probably local people that do live here year round that may consider, you know, taking their property and making a campground out of it. Taxes are high here, it's expensive. I think it can still be done tasteful, but I don't think limiting the size, I think five thousand, ten thousand square feet, that's, that's about, that's a pretty good size campsite lot, so that's just my opinion on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? This might go pretty quickly, then. Oh, Ms. Yizer, I think is next. Ruth?
Hi, thank you. Ruth Yizer, seasonal resident and taxpayer in Sealco. So we read the CTR proposed ordinance revisions and we think they're excellent. There is one bit of language in the CTR proposal that we do think that the planning board should address. As you may recall, my husband and I were very concerned about the squishiness of the AWL proposal. And that squishiness was in large part created by the fact that AWL did not disclose the maximum occupancy of the project until moments before approval. And since there was so much conflicting information between the plan and the AWL website, there was no way to figure out what the maximum occupancy would be. So to avoid squishiness in future proposals, maximum occupancy must be understood. So therefore, we recommend that that word unit be clearly defined in the ordinance. Like presumably a unit would be like a campsite, a yurt, a cabin, a tent, a treehouse, boathouse, or something else. But the ordinance should also specify how many people a unit is allowed to sleep, like is a unit like two people or four people or six people or ten people? And having the maximum occupancy of a unit defined in the ordinance could go a long way towards determining the maximum occupancy, which then clearly influences all of their calculations. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure who was next. I'm going to call Jane and Dave Ashworth.
Okay, I just want to say that as we consider how many people we can support in an area, we also need to think about one of the inputting factors should be how much water we have to support all those people. I know we have a limited amount of water here and I would like to see us be cognizant of that. I don't know if this is the appropriate board to bring this to, this concern to, or if it goes to somebody else. But we do need to consider how we're going to support the visitors that we have here and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy and Steve Lawson?
Hi. So we submitted, as you know, we submitted a lot more suggestions than just the the review standard suggestions that you asked about, Mark. So I was wondering if maybe Dick could have some time to explain those specific standards or answer any questions that you might have based on like the minimum lot size and the density recommendations that we submitted. Density was a big issue that was brought up by a lot of people you know, with concerns in the recent applications, so I think that would be worth discussing.
Okay. I had thought that if we had questions, I think we've all read what you've submitted. And I was thinking if we had questions of Mr. Dewan regarding any of these things, that we could address those as we discuss possible changes later on. I don't know how the board feels. Do you want to have Mr. Dewan explain, explain those now?
I mean, I think it might be helpful to people to hear that so that they can comment on it before the comment section is closed. You know, not everybody who's here tonight might have seen our changes that we submitted or suggested.
What's a board's pleasure here?
I'd welcome Richard or Dick Spencer to talk through some of the points that Cindy was referencing.
I would too, and Cindy, are you referring to the two documents, the discussion only document and the TG DNA document?
Yeah, so Terry put together that a really good summary of the suggestions that we're making. And then Dick put together a very well thought out draft of ordinance language that you can use if you decide it's appropriate for the town. And I think that, you know, they worked really hard, they were really thoughtful suggestions. They took into account what people said in the forum and what people commented on at the last meeting. And they also took into account what the board members said in the last meeting. So I think it would be worth hearing from Richard.
At our last meeting, you had emailed out some documents to us. One was the result of the survey and one was a summary of some of the things that from your meeting, your public meeting you had. Though they never made it into our packet, so we haven't seen those directly from the town yet. And I'm, are we going to miss anything by not having seen those at the moment?
Well, I mean, to be honest, I personally emailed them to you, so if people have chosen not to look at them, I feel like that's on them. And everything that we've, we took everything from those results and boiled them down into the suggestions that we submitted last Tuesday, so I don't think you'll be missing anything. But, you know.
My concern is not whether we read or not, whether it became part of the record because Mark pointed out last meeting that he did not read those because they did not come in by time. And I thought they'd be submit, we would see them officially in our file versus email from you, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, I mean, John did receive the email too, so if he has them too.
Is John still on? John Larson still on?
Yes.
John, our packet includes the chat that Cindy, sort of the chat transcript from the CTR meeting on, I think it was January sixth. But it does not include the survey results or the poll results. Is there a reason you excluded that from our packet?
No. It was a sin of omission as opposed to one of commission.
Okay, anyway. This Lawson, you're suggesting, go ahead, Jeff, yes?
I just want to be sure that we're okay, are you okay that you're basing a lot of your positions to us to review based on the two documents that we now have in front that you submitted for this meeting?
I, I'm comfortable with that, I think we're comfortable with that because everything that we based our documents that you have came from that forum.
Fine, that's all, I just want to make sure we weren't missing.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Lawson, are you suggesting Mr. Dewan speak or Mr. Spencer, because I heard both names?
Well, I know Mr. Spencer would like to speak, but Terry's here as well, if you have any more questions of him.
Okay, since Mr. Spencer has his hand raised, we'll call on him next.
I think I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Hi, everybody, I'm Dick Spencer and, and I did spend quite a lot of time working on, on amendments to the proposed amendments, I should say, for discussion purposes that, that the planning board might want to take a look at as they think about how they might respond to the issues that have been raised in the, in the petition and the, and at the public forum and all of that. And I basically, what I'd like to do is to try to describe for you how I arrived at the, at the specific ordinance provisions, because I think that
Quick question, question, Mr. Spencer. So you, we have two sets of things here. One, for discussion only, that's what you prepared.
That's me.
Okay, and the other one was prepared by Mr. Dewan, correct?
That's correct. And, and that's not to say I didn't talk with Terry and he didn't look at what I was working on and we put our heads together. But basically, I'm not a planner, I'm a lawyer. And so I was drafting the ordinance amendment suggestions. And Terry is the planner who worked on the community forum questions and, and answers. But, so what I'd like to ask you to look at for a second is the, is the, are the proposed ordinance changes that say for discussion only, because I didn't want to presume to write ordinance amendments for the planning board. I just wanted to see if I could make some suggestions that you might want to consider. And, and the first, the first two things I did in section one was to, was to try to address the question. It was, it was that you, you all discussed extensively at your, at your, after the public hearing on January eleventh. And that was, how do you deal with the whole range of uses that people in, who are visiting Tremont either to, to stay in a campground or stay in a cabin or stay in a yurt or stay in a cottage or stay in a motel or a hotel? How do you, how can you sensibly address that? Because right now your ordinance actually has two completely overlapping definitions. And people can argue, no, we're not a campground, we're a hotel, motel, cottage, cabin, boatel. Or they can argue that they're a campground and they fit into both. And so, and I actually thought I heard almost everyone on the planning board saying that they thought it would be a good idea to have a definition of recreational lodging facility. But they thought that the differences between a campground or a glamp ground and a hotel or a motel were, were clear enough that they shouldn't be all swept in in one definition. So I created a definition of a recreational lodging facility, which is a commercial facility containing campsites or temporary or permanent structures. And I put in campsites, that actually I think was Brett Witham's suggestion because the ordinance currently defines campsites, but then doesn't use that definition when it talks about campgrounds. So, so a recreational lodging facility would be a commercial facility with campsites or temporary or permanent structures, which are used or rented for sleeping purposes. And that's language from your existing ordinance by tourists, transients or other visitors to Tremont, including without limitation tents, recreational vehicles, cottages, cabins, yurts or other type of shelter. And then, in order to separate recreational lodging facilities from hotels and motels, which was one of the points that I thought, I think Chairman Good made at the meeting on January eleventh and seemed to be supported by other members. I think both Mr. Wilson and Mr. Witham seem to agree with that. And this is a little bit arbitrary, but what I said was And this is a little bit arbitrary, but what I said was that each structure used or rented for such purposes. If it's going to be a campground, glamp ground, recreational lodging facility, each structure shall not contain more than three sleeping rooms or sleeping areas. So, so that would draw a clear line between a glamp ground and a hotel motel. If a building had more than three sleeping rooms, then it would become a hotel motel. And that would give you a bright line that you could apply without having to think about it to tell the difference between a recreational lodging facility and a hotel motel. And then I went on to make it clear that the definition of a recreational lodging facility does not include some of the other definitions that are in your ordinance that, that might be confusing. And specifically, it shouldn't include a hotel motel, which I've also now defined, or a home occupation bed and breakfast. A home occupation bed and breakfast is a lodging facility in somebody's house with not more than four bedrooms. If it has more than four bedrooms under your definitions, it becomes a hotel motel. So, but you wouldn't want to include those as recreational lodging facilities. You also have a provision for individual private campsites, which allow people to put an individual campsite on their property. And that shouldn't be included in this definition. And then there's also a definition of a recreational facility, which would be something like a paintball facility or a golf course or something. And I just wanted to put it in as not being included because the terms recreational facility and recreational lodging facility are kind of similar. And I thought it would be helpful to just get that in one place that they're not the same thing. So then, so then the second thing I did was to create a definition of a hotel motel. And that is a structure which contains four or more rooms or sleeping areas that are used or rented for sleeping purposes. And so that creates the bright line that makes it, any application would clearly fit into, to one or the other. So I think those definitions, you could change the number of sleeping areas, but I think they, that creates a division that would accomplish a lot of what the planning board said you were trying to do in your discussion on the 11th. I then, I then started, Jeff Young had suggested, and actually a lot of the people who you've heard from in the public proceedings have suggested that you ought to, you ought to define light commercial. And I started down that path, but I came to the conclusion that, that if I did that, it's not only light commercial that seems to be permitted in the RB zone. It also appears to be industrial uses. And so if you were going to define light commercial, you probably would want to define light industrial. And when I started down that path, I found myself having to rewrite a lot of the ordinance. So I, I gave up on that. And I thought what would make more sense would be to create some specific standards that were applied in the RB district to recreational lodging facilities. So section two in what I wrote just says that if you look at your RB zone, it says all uses are permitted subject to the lot structure performance and conversion standards. I added a sentence that said, in addition, recreational lodging facilities are subject to the supplemental standards contained in paragraph E below. So by doing that, you don't affect any of the rest of the ordinance. You just create a set of standards that can be applied to, to campgrounds or in this, as we redefine them, recreational lodging facilities. And that allows you to, to put in some standards without having to really rewrite half the ordinance. And, and I think that's a very useful vehicle. Chairman Good also said that there's only so much you can bite off if you're trying to get something done quickly. So by structuring it this way, it allows you to create very specific standards that apply to recreational lodging facilities without really having to go through a lot of the rest of your, of your ordinance. And then, then I, the next section I had was a set of proposed supplemental standards for recreational lodging facilities. And these are really based on the work of Terry Dewan and the results of the community forum. And as I said, I'm not a, I'm not a land use planner. So I'm probably not the best person to, to describe or, or recommend those specific standards. But you could use this as a template for the standards that you wanted to put in place. And the ones that are here are the ones that came out of the community forum and out of Terry Dewan's work. The, the, there, there are a few points I would make. One of the discussions you had at your, at your planning board discussion.
Mr. Spencer, these are pretty self-explanatory. If you want to go through them very quickly, I think we appreciate it. We have a lot of work to do here tonight.
Yeah, okay. Well, what I want to say is I think they are fairly self-explanatory. One point I wanted to make is that on the density requirement, the suggestion is to have an area requirement for each unit. That's not a lot around the unit. It's just an amount of land that you need per unit. And the suggestion here was 30,000 square feet. You, that's the, that's the density you have for individual campsites in your ordinance. The, but that's not like a lot. It's just an amount of land that you have to show you have. The other thing is, you talked about whether the units should be put closely together or spread out. And when we looked at that, we thought it might make sense to have a unit separation standard based on the noise, the noise between the units. If you're staying in a luxury campground and you're in a cabin, it might be fine to have another cabin right nearby. But if you're in a tent or a yurt or something that doesn't, doesn't muffle the sound, we thought you might want to create a larger separation. And then the other thing.
The idea is to protect the neighbors for noise. I mean.
No, this was.
You know, if, if you stay in a noisy campground, you're probably not going to come back the next year and they're going to get a bad rating on whatever, whatever website you use, so.
Maybe you don't have to put that in, but it was just a suggestion that, that if you were thinking about the density issue for people staying in the campground, the, the point would be that you'd be a lot better off if you, if, if you want to cluster them, you shouldn't cluster them so much that, that it would create a noise problem. The other, the other point I wanted to mention is that the way this, in six, if, if a unit has under your ordinance, cooking, sleeping and, and septic disposal, it becomes a dwelling unit. So just to make that clear, I said that if there was a unit in a recreational facility that had those three things, then it would have to meet the density requirements for a residential unit. And that kind of solves that issue. And then, I'll just try to, I'm almost done here. The, the other suggestion that you talked about was the, whether you talked, whether, when you did the density, you would do total land area or suitable land area. And working with Terry, we came up with a list of areas, suitable land area that probably shouldn't be, or unsuitable land area that shouldn't be considered. And then we also suggested that, that employee housing should be permitted as an accessory use without requiring additional, an additional density standard. And then, then I, so having made those suggestions, I then went through the rest of your ordinance and, and found quite a number of, of basically technical changes that would have to be made in order to, to make the ordinance consistent. And those are in section four, five, four and five. And those changes would eliminate what would otherwise be a whole bunch of, of technical inconsistencies. And whenever I've written a zoning ordinance, which I've done many times, my rule of thumb is to spend the next year hiding under my desk while people call up and ask me questions about whether I thought of this or that. And, and I just wanted to point out to you that if you made the kinds of changes we've suggested, you would need to go through the rest of the ordinance to make it consistent. So thank you for the opportunity to, to both submit the suggestions and explain them.
Okay, thank you, sir. Looks like Mike has his hand up again. Mike? You're muted.
While I appreciate Mr. Spencer's effort at trying to revise our ordinances, this doesn't really help the year-round working citizen in our town. This is catered towards somebody who wants to come here, move here, retire, and not see anything in our residential business zone. Reculational lodging facilities, I have a six-month business that survives. Six months out of the year, I make my income. The other six months, I have to supplement my income by renting a three-bedroom unit and a four-bedroom unit seasonally. Is that a recreational lodging facility? The way this is written, it is, as are many, many other places in town. Not just from year-round people, but from summer people as well. So we're basically saying that everybody's in violation now. At this rate, I might as well just pack up my stuff and move out of town. I think this is, I think it's, it's disgusting how this is written. I don't think it's fair to the local people, and I think you're going to push local people out. Our town needs diversity. It needs mixed use. It's always going to be that way. Our town has survived on tourism since the 1800s. I'm a history nerd myself. I've seen it. This is, people, people came here from away. They vacationed here. They bought homes here. And the locals catered to them. That's always going to happen. But we can't survive if we can't make a living here. And if you want to make this all residential only, that's basically what you're doing. You're saying anybody with any lot size, anybody that's got a wetland on their property, that's going to count against their total allotment. That's not fair. It's not fair to the local people. And yes, I understand that a lot of the people that are in this group tonight are directly opposed to this. I mean, opposed to the way things are written now. We have to be very careful on how we change things and how we set the path for Tremont. And if you want people to live here year-round, I can tell you I've read all of the documents, Mr. Spencer, that you presented to the board tonight. I got a copy from the town office as well as a digital copy. I've read them 15 times. And I don't think that the way that they are written is beneficial to a year-round family like mine that's raising a son, that's going to school, and that's paying $10,000 a year in taxes. I'm sorry, it's not going to happen. I also put traveling nurses in my units that are helping during COVID. So it's, it's, you know, you're basically saying anybody that's renting is in violation. And I'm sorry, but I don't agree with this. And it's great that people have tons of money to throw at you, but it's not my thing. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I don't think we want to back and forth, but I don't believe that what you're doing would be prohibited.
Yeah, I don't want to take his comment for what it is. Mr. Lawson, I mean, Ms. Lawson, sorry.
Hi, no, I just, I just want to say that I appreciate Mr. Mansa Lilly's comment and his, his fear about people trying to come in and change everything and squash all business altogether. But these suggestions that we've made are specific to recreational lodging facilities like campgrounds, glam grounds. They, they don't have anything to do with, with rentals. And we're not suggesting that people shouldn't be able to have businesses out of their, their homes. You know, people should be able to have light commercial businesses like Silk Cove Pottery, like your landscaping business, Mr. Mansa Lilly. You know, and I appreciate that you have a concern about year-round housing and people being able to live here. And that's something I've actually been studying in school for the last couple of semesters. And, you know, Tremont has a, you know, in 2020, 53.7% of people couldn't afford to live here. And this year in 2021, actually, the recent data is up to 70% of people that can't afford to live here. Far Harbor, you compare it to them, they have businesses, more businesses than we do. They're in the upper 70% for their affordability. So I, I think that there's a misunderstanding here about what the intention is of these changes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Dewan, I see you're next.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just to reiterate a few things that have been said, maybe some things that haven't been said. This is an iterative process. Now, we've gone back and forth a couple of times. And I'm sure it's going to go back and forth many more times. We've conducted, as you know, one community forum. And as we said last time, it was our intent not to stop there, but to keep on going to find out what more people have to say. When we wrote the document that you had before, you'll notice that there's a couple of places where we've highlighted sections in yellow. And these are very specific recommendations for, you know, lot sizes, a number of units, or setbacks and so forth. These are CTR's best notion at this point of what might be a suitable response to looking at changes to the ordinance. But we feel that there's a lot of discussion that has to happen specifically on those points. And, you know, we, another way of approaching this, in addition to this kind of discussion we're having here, might be to have another similar community forum that we would, that the town would sponsor. And we have an opportunity for people to get involved and do the polling that we had done before to find out what people feel about these sort of approaches.
Okay, thank you. Mike, I see you have your hand up. You know, I'm ready to bring this whole thing to a close because I think we're just going back and forth. Mike, I'm going to give you a minute.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to say, I just appreciate some clarity on it. I just think that if we can simplify the steps that we take and the things that we bring to town meeting this year, to things that everyone can agree on, agree on. You know, everyone, everybody in common, like the buffering and things like that, that we know that, that's an issue. I think taking the whole package all at once is a little bit too much to digest. I think if you take little steps, you'll see, you know, how it works going forward.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else want to say anything before I close the public hearing?
Yeah, Mark?
Yes.
Can I ask two questions to Mr. Spencer?
Do you think you should ask them now or wait till we have our discussion on the amendments to the campground standards? What do you think is more appropriate?
Well, I'm never quite sure whether, what back and forth you want with the public once we close the, the public hearing. So I would have that opportunity.
Go ahead.
Go ahead and ask.
I'm muted, sorry. Yes, go ahead and ask.
Mr. Spencer, one member of the public mentioned concern about maximum occupancy. Did you address that in this? Does this get addressed in some way, what you've been proposing?
Not in, not by putting in a number of occupants, but, I mean, I think, actually Beth Gott had, in one of the prior meetings, said that what you needed was, you know, was. actually, Beth Gott had, in, in one of the prior meetings, said that what you needed was, you know, was like a formula. And so if you look at the, at the, at the types of changes we were recommending, we were saying that by definition, a unit in a recreational lodging facility would have less than, would have three or less sleeping areas. And then we had a maximum number of units. So that would be, you'd have twenty units, which would have no more than three sleeping areas. And if you put two people in each sleeping area or each bedroom, that would give you, um, basically six people per unit, which would give you a maximum number of 120 as the maximum occupancy. So you, you would, I mean, unless they wanted to, you know, put five people in one bed, you'd end up with, you know, roughly 120 as a maximum number.
Okay. My, my second question is, um, did you look at our site plan review ordinances in tying these together at all?
Um, I've, I've, I've been focused on the land use ordinance. Um, and so it, it may well be necessary to, to take a look at the site review ordinance to make sure that there aren't any inconsistencies there. But I have not, I haven't gone through and made the technical changes.
Mr. Spencer is no, correct?
The answer is that I haven't gone through the site review to make technical changes.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff, you all set?
All set.
Okay. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing at 7:35.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I have a second. Lawson, I couldn't understand you.
I'll second. That wasn't my, that was somebody beeped, but I'll second.
Okay. You beeped, you beeped a second. Okay. Uh, motion second on the table to close the public hearing. I'll call any discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Next up, Pointy Head, and as we've talked about, we didn't get anything from our attorney as far as an opinion on the two issues we asked her about. And, um, uh, Mr. Barr has asked that we table, uh, any, uh, discussion on that until our February 8th meeting. So I will take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second, motion is second on the table to, on the table to table. Uh, discussion of Pointy Head, uh, your site plan review application until February, our February 8th meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Let's move on to discussion of, to sections of land use ordinance pertaining to campgrounds. Okay. Here's the hard facts, the reality here, folks. As of the 29th, we no longer have a moratorium. If we're going to give something to selectmen, we have to do it by their March 7th meeting. Our next meeting is February 8th. We also need to schedule a public hearing on what we decide to send to, um, selectmen for inclusion on the warrant, and that'll have to be done sometime before the 7th, um, as well. So.
Wait, sorry, Mark, can you clarify that again? You think we have to have a public hearing before we send something to the?
Yes, we have to legally, we have to, the public hearing that we just held last time and this time, we don't legally, didn't legally have to do. We decided, we decided to do that because this is a hot button issue, and we wanted to hear from the public.
Yep.
Okay. But we do legally, once we make recommendations, proposals on ordinance changes, we then legally have to have a public hearing. And of course, because of scheduling requirements and notices in the newspaper, we will have to do that at our February 8th meeting to schedule when. You got that?
I, I, I just wanted a clarification that, uh, do we have to have a public hearing on the proposed changes before we submit the changes?
To selectmen, yes. Yes.
I'll just jump in and say, you don't have to, but it's recommended. They're going, it'll depend on how comfortable the select board is with placing it on the warrant if you haven't held a public hearing, because you can obviously change the ordinance after the public hearing.
I would recommend us holding a public hearing before it goes to selectmen because it's going to eliminate any issues with them right there.
Okay. That, that makes sense. It's just helpful to recognize that it's not a legal requirement. It's a sort of strategy and political decision.
No, it's a legal requi, it's a legal requirement to hold the public hearing.
That's right. But not, it doesn't have to happen before we submit to the select board. I want to clarify that, like, what, what are our choices and what are our, our requirements?
Correct. And the select board will hold, um, their own public hearing. Um, most likely that will be April 19th, if there's something on the ballot.
Okay. So, so our next scheduled meeting is the 8th. We'll have to schedule our public hearing at that point. That's the only meeting we have scheduled for, uh, February. I'm going to suggest that we're probably going to need an extra meeting somewhere in there. We don't have to make that decision tonight, but look at your calendars and that sort of thing. And be prepared to maybe talk about it. And, uh, and we'll make a decision at that February 8th meeting. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So. Mr. Did I hear something?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Larson.
I emailed the planning board this afternoon a amended land use ordinances with the proposed changes that Mr. Spencer and Mr. Dewan suggested. Did you get that email?
Saw the email. I just thought it was a land use ordinance, and anyway, you said, and, and.
Well, it's, it's got the red strikeout in the underline insertions. It just gives you a format to go by.
Right. With their recommendations?
Yes.
Which we already have before us. Thank you. Maybe you can put that in our packets for the February 8th meeting, John. Okay. Going to have to, I think there are some things that we can really get out of the way very quickly here. We, we've had some discussions, um, at our last, uh, meeting. Had some ideas that I think are quite good. Uh, and maybe we should tackle the easy stuff first. And the other things are going to be a little thornier, and we're going to have a lot of discussion, and we may even have to bump that until, uh, our February 8th meeting. And I think, Jesse, are you there?
Yeah.
Jesse, you, uh, you would prefer that we make a motion if we, on each individual item that we decide to add? Is that correct?
Yes. My recommendation would be that you stick to one topic and come to a decision whether or not you all agree on making a change or move on to the next item, um, just to keep better track of it. And if you're all in agreement, make a motion. So we have it on record and move on to the next, um, item.
Okay. I will, um, I've, I've written down some of the things we discussed at the last meeting as well as some other things. And one of them, annual inspections by the CEO and issuance of an annual permit. This is something Lemoine does, and certainly an annual inspection would, uh, uncover any, let's say, conversion of a yurt or whatever into a residential dwelling unit. For one thing, and there are other, might be other health and safety issues that, uh, or code enforcement issues that might be uncovered by that visit. So any, any thoughts on that?
I mean, an annual visit for enforcement purposes is, you know, I would, I would presume that the code enforcement officer would kind of be doing, sort of kind of driving around checking things out anyway. So I think that's a no-brainer to make that, you know, um, uh, you know, structured, uh, annual event.
We have to get specific about what it is that they're inspecting? I mean, like.
They're inspecting the ability for compliance with the permit that's been applied, that's been given, right? I mean, that's what.
Yeah. So they're using the land use ordinance as the standards, and then any conditions that were put on at the time of the permit application, permit approval.
Hey, one, one thing I neglect to say, I, I think as we make these, uh, decisions, it's also going to have to go and have our attorney, town attorney, take a look at that.
Yes.
And to make sure that, that everything's legal and above board and, and, and it's in the right, uh, correct form of language. So, um.
And, well, while we're there, Mark, as we like got into this conversation, I don't see a attorney on this call right now. Is that right? There's, there's, we don't have an attorney representing us right now.
No, that's correct.
And did we ask the select board for a planner to help us with this process?
Yes, we did.
They have authorized me to bring back planner suggestions to them.
So I'm going to say realistically, we're not going to, we're not, we might have a planner by, by March, but I don't think we're going to have it by February 8th.
I see. Okay. That's just helpful to.
Yeah, I, I was going to mention that too. Okay. Well, if there's no real discussion on this, I'll take a motion.
Well, I make a motion that we have the code enforcement officer make annual inspections per our ordinance.
And issue a, an annual permit too?
And issue an annual permit.
So here's a second.
I'll second that.
Motion is second on, on the table to, uh, have the, uh, CEO do annual inspections and issue a permit.
To all campgrounds.
To all campgrounds. Yeah, all campgrounds.
Or recreational, whatever we're calling it.
If, if we get there, yeah, we should have maybe discussed that next. Any comments, discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five zero. Okay. Since Beth brought up the, uh, this is a little, uh, thornier. The, um, recreational lodging facility definition. Now, at our last meeting, I think it was Brett, that suggested that we just replace other shelters in the definition of campground and campsite with shelters that aren't residential dwelling units. For me, that has the same effect as this residential, um, lodging facility thing where you, where just a long list of yurts and other such things. It's either a residential dwelling unit or it's not.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think it's the flip side of the same, the same equation. And in, in my, at least from my perspective, the, the decision, if you will, is just, is whether, you know, we, um, um, tackle a larger issue or focus on just campgrounds. Um, you know.
We're talking about campgrounds.
I, I, I know, but when you, but when you change that, when you change that definition and you, and then you apply some of these other, uh, requirements to cottages, you're, right? I mean, you're arguably, we're now talking about things that were not strictly part of the, you know, what the moratorium and what was, you know, the, the major concern. Although I think, you know, we've heard from the public, we've heard from folks that it's the concern now, I think probably particularly in light of what I guess I'll call the pivot of Pointy Head. Um, this is a concern as well, the cottages, the, the yurts, the, you know, all these types of transient housing. And, you know, I'm not fundamentally opposed to addressing it now. But I just think it is a decision. We, we, you know, if we, if we tackle that definition, we are moving, you know, arguably, we're addressing a broader, you know, a slightly broader, um, issue than just a campground.
So would you say, so you're in favor of just changing other shelters to shelters that aren't residential dwelling units?
I'm not adverse, I don't think, to the definition. Let's see if I can find that. The, the definition of a lodging facility, I guess the one, the one pause I have is, is, is to, Mr. Mansalili's comment about, you know, if someone has, if it's not an, a home occupied, you know, if they have a, an apartment building or something, you know, that they're renting, and they have a couple of them on their, on their, or a duplex, like I, I haven't thought through how that played. And they don't live there. Like, I haven't figured out how that plays out.
But I guess. Sorry, Brett, go ahead.
Yeah, go. But I'm not adverse to trying to address, I guess what I'll call the cottage issue or the yurt, the yurt issue or the glamping issue. As well as what I would, at least to me, the traditional campsite would be, you know, you've got a, you've got a tent, basically a tent and a place for, for people to, you know, to camp out. It's certainly, you know, our, the way our, the things are defined now, people are, um, you know, able to, to, um, argue it's not a campground, and it's effectively kind of the same issue in terms of impact on the land, number of people there, kind of traffic and things like that.
Any other comments?
Mark?
Yes.
I was just going to add that I think the recreational lodging facility definition, where it defines it as a commercial facility, um, may protect some of those issues Brett is talking about, um, as far as rental units, um, that people have. I would think through the next, um, the proposed amendment to the hotel motel does not seem to specify commercial facility. So if that one was adopted the way it's proposed, I could foresee that one could capture four-bedroom rental homes the way it's written.
Remember, we also have the whole standard of cooking facilities. And what, uh, was being referred to by Mr. Mansalili is the, you know, our full-fledged residences, dwelling units that have cooking facilities and bathrooms and, and, and not recreational, just those without cooking facilities. So it.
Right. I, I believe Mr. Mansalili was more concerned about the hotel motel definition.
Okay. And, um, Mr. Spencer, we see your hand and, and, you know, this is a discussion by the board, and at some point, we may want to weigh in with you, but just be patient, please. Anybody else have comments on this?
Yeah. I mean, I think that my sort of observation is, um, for both recreational lodging facilities and defining hotel motel, the definitions seem somewhat close, but I'd like the, 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 being explicit that we're talking about things that are not dwelling units. Um, and that dwelling units fall in a different category. And that if you're renting a house that's got a kitchen and a bathroom and sleeping facilities, then you're res, you're renting a residential dwelling unit. And maybe those should be regulated differently, but that's totally not part of, at least how I'm thinking about this conversation.
What we're discussing here.
Exactly. But I do think that as we define recreational lodging facilities, making sure that it's explicitly not dwelling units and.
Well, I think.
Hotel motel is not dwelling.
Yeah, the word recreational is key, I think.
I guess the other point that I would make, Mark, thinking about what. I guess the other point that I would make, Mark, thinking about what you were talking about, about sort of simply adding a clause at the end of campground. While I, I think I agree with your point that they're essentially have the same effect. I think that really naming what we're talking about and like changing the definition, saying actually, like, we're not trying to hide lots of things under campground. Because campground does have a different connotation, I think, than a series of cabins. And to be able to to really acknowledge that we want to update our ordinance to be more inclusive of the lots of different ways in which temporary sleeping units can be rented out.
I see, you know, I'm looking at the definition as Mr. Spencer is is written here. Without limitation, tents, recreational vehicles, cottages, cabins, cottages and cabins, okay? There are people that in this town that rent out what they consider might be a cottage or a cabin. It has cooking facilities in it, has bathroom, it's a residential dwelling unit. Are those people getting caught up in this definition as proposed?
Well, as proposed.
And why not?
I think that's what, that's what's lost in saying, and I think I kind of follow what you're saying. If you carve out, I think if you carve out dwelling units where they're kind of standalone kitchens, bathrooms, people could live there, you probably avoid that issue.
Yep. Okay. I would agree with that. But how does that differ then from just adding the clause shoulders that are residential dwelling units?
I think it just changes the top, the, 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 the base, the term. So that we're not talking about cabins as campgrounds, we're talking about cabins as recreational lodging facilities. And we're talking about cottages that aren't dwelling units as recreational lodging facilities. And we're talking about campgrounds and glamp grounds as recreational logic facilities.
Subcategories.
Yeah.
So this might be something we want to think about and come back with something at our next meeting, something, some actual language here, or is somebody prepared to say something?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at what was submitted to us to look at, and the two clauses, the two words cottage and cabins. We go to the supplemental standards and sort of makes those stand out as not being part of a campground situation. It's the way I read it. Subsection six, under E.
I lost you, Jeff. Can you walk us through that one again?
E six, if you look.
Oh, I see. Right. The residential dwelling unit.
Yes.
It sort of covers the cottages and cabins that do have bathrooms and, and, and cooking, cooking facilities is what we always focus on.
Well, so then I don't think we would, the way I'm reading this then, that it's, it's a unit within that definition that contains cooking, sleeping. Must be all dimensional requirements for a residential dwelling unit. What?
Yeah, I don't know what the resident, uh, what that is.
Doesn't that, doesn't that, Jeff, then, it doesn't E six suggest that a residential dwelling unit in a recreational lodging facility? Why doesn't that include it? It just seems to me you would.
We can have.
You want to make sure, it seems to me you want to make sure that cabins cottages that are residential dwelling units are not recreational lodging facilities.
Correct.
Why'd you, yeah, why not just put that in the definition of recreation lodging, recreational lodging facility instead of.
You know, there's, there's a couple of ways you define things, you know, you do it by, you do it by saying what something is not. And you can, you can also do it by saying what something is. And sometimes for clarity, you'll do both. So you'll say, you know, it's not a, it's not a dwelling unit, but, but, but this is what it is. It's these other types of things that aren't dwelling units. I think, I think that's where we're I want to think about it, but I, I think that's where I'm at anyway.
It's, Mr. Spencer, can you quickly tell us what you were thinking here?
Yeah, two things very quickly. One is if you look at your definition of commercial use, it says specifically transient rentals exclusive of rental of residential buildings and or dwelling units for seven days or more. I don't know what the seven days is, but, but yeah, actually I do see it. The, it never was our intent to, to include people who are renting out houses. And I think maybe that's Mr. Mansalili was talking about. So it'd be easy to add that kind of a phrase to our definition. The other thing is if you take, if you take Mr. Witham's addition of that just says other structures excluding dwelling units, you still haven't drawn a clear line between recreational lodging facilities and hotel motels. So you need to deal with that. But so it would be, I mean, it really is an oversight on my part that I didn't include the exclusion of rental buildings because that was never the intent.
So the other question that I have, looking at this definition, is that I feel like I'm actually sort of close to being able to make a motion on this unless we feel like we want to keep talking and but the, is in the first sentence, maybe this is actually a question right for Mr. Spencer. Is the, why is it necessary to clarify who is sleeping? So it says rented or for sleeping purposes by tourist transients or other visitors to Tremont. And is there a useful difference, you know, difference to just ending the sentence at, at are used for rent, used or rented for sleeping purposes, period? Mark, is it okay for Mr. Spencer to respond to that question?
Oh, sure. Yeah, sorry.
Great.
I don't think it's really necessary to say it. I thought that I put it in there just with the idea that, that it would, I mean, the chairman mentioned that people stay in campgrounds and hotels for different reasons. And what I was just trying to do was to reflect that, that what you're really talking about is people coming to stay for a short period of time, whatever their purpose. And by drawing a line of three sleeping areas between a campground or a glamp, a recreational lodging facility unit and a hotel, that was the line I was drawing. I don't think you need that language. One other point, the way I drafted it, if you, if somebody wanted to do a facility that included kitchen facilities in a glamp ground as a contained unit, they'd be able to do it. But if they did it, they'd have to meet the requirements for a dwelling unit. It may be a cleaner way to do it is to just say that if they put in kitchen facilities, then they're not a recreational lodging facility. That's a policy choice that you could make. I made it one way, you could easily make it the other way.
I say this, kick this one down the road until our next meeting and give it some thought. Anybody object to that? It's getting late. We might have other things to discuss.
Okay.
No problem, anybody? Okay. Smokeless fire pits was mentioned. Requiring those instead of what we, the change we made the last time, which was just to require a fire pit, I gotta find it, approved by the fire chief, stone or a masonry or metal, I believe. Smoke is, can be an issue, we know. Breathing wood smoke is not a healthful thing to do.
But smokeless fire pits, I mean, is that like a regulatory thing or is that a branding, sort of marketing device by a couple of, I mean, like, it's hard to know, like, how do you define a smokeless fire pit?
Well, I think there are a lot of brands. If you remember AWL.
Oh, no, no, I, I'm familiar with the brands. I just don't know what makes, I mean, like, could I, would I have to like provide a brochure that says that it's smokeless? If I was building it and does it have to like stay smokeless on it? Does it, is it certified by the National Smokeless Fire Pit Association? Like, it just feels like it's something that sure, like solo stove is, says it's smokeless. But it's not, I mean, if I like open up my dictionary, it's not without smoke, right? There's still is smoke. And so smokeless is sort of a marketing term that's not very easy to enforce. And so are we asking our code enforcement officer to go around with a smoke meter, you know, a smoke alarm? It just, I don't know. It feels tricky to me.
That would be a little ridiculous, I think. I, I think just if they would specify in their application and provide us like with a brochure, this brochure, this is what they're using, this is what we're going to use, something like that. I only bring this up because it was mentioned in our last discussion.
For sure. Yep.
I mean, they're generally the kind of fire pits that are designed such that they will pull a draft down under the flame and more completely combust what's there. A smoke is just, you know, carbon that isn't burnt. But yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's like, if this is a solo stove endorsement permission or not.
I think there are other varieties, right? You, you have one, don't you, Brett?
I, I do. They work great. But then what they do is they draft, they'll pull air down underneath and, and it'll burn everything. I mean, there is some smoke though. There's just not as much. I know it came, it came up in AWL. I mean, there, I, I don't know. It, you raised a good question. We could, I think we could, in principle, I'm in favor of that. I just don't know. You're, what you're talking about is the enforcement piece, like how you, if there weren't standards, I don't know, you enforce it. I don't know. It'll be Google smokeless fire pit. All I'm probably gonna get is like solo, I'm, you're probably not gonna get.
Advertisements. Right.
Well, with the enforcement, when the code enforcement officer actually went to do his, uh, this annual inspection, and then he looks around and, or she looks around and sees, oh, wait, there's not a smokeless fire pit there.
But I think that, but during the, like, findings of fact, part of the application process, we would then have to like look at the application and determine whether or not the applicant is, has submitted a, like, is going to use a smokeless fire pit. And sure, if they say like, we're using solo stove, we can say, okay, great. Like, we believe this solo stove qualifies as this. But if they're using a like homemade solo, you know, smokeless fire pit that, you know, is manufactured by a steel smith down the street.
Wouldn't it have to be approved by our code enforcement officer?
Or fire chief?
Yeah.
As, as we do now for the other pits. It's not a big issue. Let's just move on. I, I'll take a motion if somebody wants to make a motion to include this.
Um, you know, I'm actually doing a little bit of research here. There, there are design standards for and it's really, it's about the venting. It's about ensuring you get air underneath and pulling up through to burn, have a more complete burn. I, I don't know. I don't, it's not a terrible thing, right? I mean, you can at least, you can at least require it and, you know, people would, you know, hopefully, it's, it's just one, another thing we could do.
Is that under, under Reuters laboratory that?
Yeah, well, New York Times has like their top ten picks. There's a DUI.
Do you want to make a motion to that affect?
Sure. I, I move that we implement a requirement that camp sites utilize smokeless fire pits.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion is second on the table to require that campgrounds use smokeless fire pits. Any discussion?
I think my point of discussion would just be, and, and we'll ask our attorney as we start drafting up this language to help us figure out what are the specific performance standards that we can point to. And it sounds like Brett maybe found the beginnings of some of that.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah. I agree. Anything else? Hearing nothing, I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five zero. And the other thing we talked about was quiet hours. And I see that CTR has also mentioned something about that in the things that they have, they have submitted. You know, it comes down to what should quiet hours be? 10 o'clock to seven o'clock, blah, blah, blah. And, and enforcement, I don't know. It's a difficult.
You don't have an overall kind of noise code here, Tremont?
There's no noise ordinance and, and it's been talked about, but it's, there's no enforcement.
When I go to Catat and Shadows in August, they have there that quiet, the, they dim the lights, the, like the, the streetlights at 10 o'clock. And all the kids put their bicycles away and it's quiet time. And it's kind of enforced by the people there. But I mean, when I go and my two grandsons come time when those lights dim, they put their bikes away. And it just, it does quiet down.
Guess I know what's gonna happen to them if they don't, right, Beth?
Oh, I know. Yeah.
Where did you see the, the quiet hours in the?
I know I saw it. I, it might have.
Yeah, I, I saw it somewhere too.
What Mr. Dewan submitted. I, I don't think there were any recommendate, it wasn't there, there was no recommendation on a timeframe.
Well, I mean, 10 o'clock on a, isn't crazy, I guess. If it, you know, obviously it's different during the weekend, on the weekends. Right, 10 o'clock, you know, I'll be in bed by then, but others, people that are on vacation.
Going the way we're going.
Yeah. I mean, people on, that are on vacation, you know, I mean, they're at a campsite. I mean, they're, I, I can tell you, I live right down the road from the one here on the corner and I don't hear, you know, so I, I mean, 10 o'clock sounds reasonable to me. I don't know what other people think.
I, I have to agree. I, I live one property over from the Quiet Side Campground and there are occasions where you might hear a little bit of talking and that sort of thing late at night, but it's very rare.
10 PM, quiet hours?
My instinct is actually to not add quiet hours to regulate it. Maybe we think about that with like a bigger like noise ordinance. I, I guess I'm thinking that I wouldn't treat campgrounds differently than neighborhoods.
Right. I mean, that, that's a good point. Except you have a concentration of people. I mean, I'm more, I'm more apt to hear my neighbor that's even farther away than the campground play electric guitar sometimes, or he's good, so I don't complain. And, or maybe somebody across the road playing music. I also hear, I, I also have on the other side of Bo Yar where, you know, I hear all kinds of noise all day. So you're gonna find, you're gonna find a noise ordinance, Lawson, is gonna be very unpopular as it's so difficult to enforce.
I, I do think if you, though, I mean, obviously the focus here is on campgrounds. It's a concentration of people. It's something we heard as far as, as a concern. I do feel like it at least provides a hook if there's, you know, repeated, you know, issues. It's at least something to point to where you can, you know, correct, you know, correcting the behavior. And I, I know, I, I hear you, Lawson. I, I, I'm kind of surprised we don't have a, just kind of a general one. I guess I've never, never had an issue. never had an issue, um. Um, and it's called Quiet Side.
Our first point raised tonight.
Go ahead, Jeff, sorry.
Our first point raised tonight is annual inspection. So if we put in noise, uh, a, a quiet hours and the town gets complaints.
Yeah.
It can be addressed whether we renew a permit. If we have an annual renewing permit process, it's almost like bars have to go through a process and the noise goes outside the bar a lot. They don't get their liquor license renewed, this type of thing. And I do feel there's a difference of we as residents are conscious of our neighbors and we know our neighbors. We try to be considered, uh, with all due respect to the tourists, you know, they're here for a week. They're here to have a nice time or do they really care about the neighbors?
Yeah.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I also, the whole argument in Bar Harbor about Airbnb is about, you know, do those transient people using Airbnbs care about the neighborhood as much as if it was a full-time resident living in those houses? It's the same sort of approach. So I will move that we should have include quiet hours as part of a, 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 uh, regulate, a part of the reg, um, ordinances.
Okay, do we want to specify what those hours should be at this point?
I didn't think we're making a list that specific here, so I, I, I thought it was more conceptual. So I wasn't proposing, but I'd go to them. Someone's proposed something, you know, but.
I, I, I believe that, uh, A W L has quiet hours. Is that correct, Ms. Law, uh, Ms. Lawson, right?
Why, why do we care?
And I wouldn't ask Ms. Lawson to speak on A W L's behalf.
I, I just wanted to, uh, know what, what hours they proposed. Just to give us an idea.
Um, we have quiet hours at 10 o'clock.
Until?
I believe it's seven in the morning.
Thank you.
I don't think that's unreasonable.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable to me.
Okay.
I'd motion to that effect.
I make a motion that quiet hour should be from 10 o'clock at night till 7 A M.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second on the table. Quiet hours at campground should be from 10 P M to 7 A M. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
I want to say no.
Okay. Beth?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So we'll make that four to one with Lawson in opposition.
I like the spirit, Lawson.
I don't know if they've ever done that before, but it feels good.
I like it.
Yeah.
Let it all loose there Lawson. Hey, probably related to this is, uh, I wrote down, I don't think we really discussed this, but I wrote down one idea owner or a representative to be on duty whenever the campground is open and through the overnight.
Well, I would think that they would be just naturally, but.
It's required in the ordinance.
Yeah, I think someone has to be there. Otherwise, I don't know, you know, if there's a problem and no one's there, the owner or no one's there. You've got, you've got, I don't know what the police, yeah, I mean, I think that's a no brainer. So it's not the ordinance, we should obviously add that.
I agree.
And, and I guess that I mean, for me, it goes back to the, like, the distinction between dwelling units, because certainly the owners not necessarily, if they're renting out an Airbnb down the street, they may not be there, um, every night.
Airbnb is in a campground.
I know, I know, I know. But I, I just wonder if there's something about, like, is it? Is this, is this another distinction where we're like, once it's a campground or recreational lodging facility, like, one of the things that defines that is that there's always an owner or a manager on site. And I guess we're saying that yes, that is part of the characteristic of a recreational lodging facility.
Anybody else? Do I have a motion or not here?
I'll move that we, uh, include a manager, um, on the premises in the evenings.
In the evenings or at all times?
24 hours.
I'd say 24 hours, as long as the campground is open.
Someone, yes, someone has to be there.
24 hours, fine.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is second on the table to, uh, require that an owner or a representative be on duty uh, at all hours, 24 hours when the campground is open. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson, I'm on the edge of my seat here.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five, nothing. Okay. Uh, we all know that one of the big issues when we had the discussions about Katie Wilderness was RVs. And we mentioned at some point, uh, possibly one thing is not allowing RVs in, uh, banning RVs from campgrounds. Any thoughts on that?
Just for purposes of this discussion, RVs are, you're including trailers, campers and?
Uh, we, we actually have a definition for that, Jeff.
Well, I know we're gonna use our own definitions. I thought we might be getting ventures looking at everything.
The definition is, uh, as soon as I get there, recreational vehicle. A vehicle or an attachment to a vehicle designed to be towed and designed for temporary sleeping or living quarters for one or more persons and which may include a pickup camper, travel trailer, tent trailer, camp trailer and motorhome. In order to be considered as a vehicle and not as a structure, the unit must remain with its tires on the ground and must be registered with the State Division of Motor Vehicles.
What do the other campgrounds do now? I mean, what Bass Harbor campground?
Bass Harbor is the only one that allows RVs.
Okay.
I don't believe there are any RVs over at, uh, Quiet Side. At least I've never seen one go in there.
A lot of discussions had both with the A O L application and with the public hearings and so forth about the additional burden on our roads. We don't have a lot of ability to control that and the condition of our roads. There was a lot of residents concerned about introducing more RV type traffic on our roads. So I would move that we exclude, um, RVs as part of a campground.
I'm actually, yeah, I'm in, yeah, well, yep.
Motion is second to, uh, uh, have no RVs in any campgrounds. Any discussion?
I guess my just sort of question for discussion is like, is there a difference between a, like a pickup truck with a bed cap?
Yeah.
Which to me feels like, I think that it falls under the category of RV, but doesn't seem like it impacts the roads as much as a, you know, huge, I don't know how long they are.
In, in our, in our, uh, definition of a recreational vehicle, it includes a pickup camper. Now, if you're telling, talking about just one of those, um, what do you want to say, covering the bed there, uh, sort of things, and somebody wants to throw a couple of sleeping bags in the back and, and sleep, I don't think it really covers that.
I don't know. If it's a vehicle designed to be, you know, for temporary sleeping or living quarters, I mean, I can design my Honda Fit for temporary sleeping quarters. I, 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 so I, I guess my point for discussion is, I think that I would be in favor of limiting a size. Limiting anything larger than, and I'm not quite sure what that size is yet. Maybe it's longer than 20 feet?
Larger than a Fit?
Larger than a Honda Fit. That anything, you know, that, that there's something like small campers, I feel like, or small RVs. I'm not opposed to RVs. I think, I feel like we should regulate against large RVs.
How is this gonna affect Bass Harbor campground? I mean, how many RVs that they have? I mean, can we just? All of a sudden.
Baby grandfather.
They would be grandfathered on that, yeah. It wouldn't affect them at all. It'd be, are all new campgrounds in town.
New campgrounds, okay.
Yeah, if it just gets approved by voters. And if these things get approved by voters.
I just, yes, okay.
You know, I, I think if you, if you make it, reverse it from the other direction is that campground can't provide facilities for any type of RV vehicle. Uh, I, I, I hear what Lawson's saying, but you know, who's gonna go out and measure the length of trailers and the height trailers and vans and all the rest? It's, it's, the enforcement is.
State.
I would, I, I would support the, just a, a straight ban of the motion on the table or as you suggest, um, Jeff, approaching it from the other way, uh, you know, my concern is just a lot of things. I mean, it's just, there, there, they are, they can be huge, which, which were, you know, the other one in the spectrum, the big ones. They also tend, you know, they have tanks where they can come in. I don't care what size they are. For, uh, you know, gray water tanks, they come in and they've been traveling around and they hook up and dump it into the, into the septic, uh, and it may be, um, you know, from time that's not even here. Uh, I think that on balance, you know, I, I, I'm in favor of it. I, I would vote for the as defined, no RVs. I think if there are a few people that want to slip in under the, under the wire, Lawson, and you know, they're on a campsite with a tent there and they're sort of friends and they pop in with a pickup truck and sleep in the back, whatever. It's not gonna happen that often and I'm not that concerned about it. Um, but I would support the motion.
Okay, okay, um, I'll call for a vote then. Jeff?
Yes.
Oh, one thing I want to say first, uh, we shouldn't use RV, we should use actually recreational vehicle. Since that's what it's called in our definition. Okay. Uh, Jeff, yes? Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
No.
He's going crazy tonight, folks. And I'm gonna say yes, yes.
They're on a roll.
Okay, those were what I thought were gonna be easier ones. Uh, the other things we've talked about and it's 8:25 and if we want to maybe discuss some of these things at our next meeting, I'm fine with that. I'll leave it up to you. Uh, I'll just name, well, here's one I think that it's easy too, um. Campground and individual private campsite. I, I think the intent in my, what I've always thought about that is, is if I own a piece of property and I want to come here and camp, I can do so under the individual private thing. But it doesn't necessarily say that. Maybe we want to add non-commercial because I know that, uh, I think it was Mr. Spencer mentioned something about that, uh, last week. And so it would avoid any, any confusion. Does that make sense?
No.
No?
You mean, you, if I own a piece of property with nothing on it, I can rent it out to someone else to camp on?
No, you can't, because it would be non-commercial. Otherwise you'd be a camp.
Can I let someone else camp on it? Can I let someone else camp on it without?
If you had a friend, probably, yeah, why not?
I don't have any friends, so I don't have to worry about that.
You didn't say yes.
We'll, we'll try to help you out, Jeff.
You don't want to do that.
We don't even want to touch it. I'm just, you know, there's just, there's some confusion there and, and I just was trying to clarify that.
What's your, what's the concern you have that someone's gonna have like a one, one site campground in their backyard, they're gonna run out to people?
Yes.
Okay. Well.
I don't view that much different than Airbnb.
Okay. So we're not gonna have a motion on that?
You can make a motion, Mark.
I know. But I'm not hearing a lot of.
I mean, is this gonna pick up that airstream that's on the water in Bass Harbor?
Talk to the code enforcement officer, I don't know.
I think I would bookmark that and come back to it as we're defining recreational lodging facilities. It seems like.
Okay, okay, fine.
All these definitions affect each other and get complicated quickly.
Okay, guess I wasn't as easy as I thought. Um, minimum acreage. That's what we wanted to discuss tonight.
You know, I, I'll just tell you what I did when I read down through this. I crossed out five and I put 10.
So you couldn't have a campground of less than 10 acres?
Yeah, I, I just, it's five acres. Well, first of all, so I also was thinking also in terms of the density. I think 30,000 square feet is like 0.7 of an acre. Something like that. Um, so you could have, for, that means I guess for five acres, you could stick, you could put, I don't know, five or six uh, sites. And that feels like you could have, you could end up with potentially a lot of like small little dotted places. It just seemed like five acres is not a lot of land. At least it doesn't feel like that to me.
Yeah, well, the 30,000 square feet is still up for discussion as well. I mean.
Yes, I had crossed it off and put, I, I had lowered that number. So I increased the. Yeah.
The, the state standard, the state minimum is 1,000. We're already five times that with 5,000. 30,000? Seems a bit excessive.
Almost an acre.
Well, uh, you know, uh, an acre is 43,560 square feet, so.
Like seven, three quarters of an acre, something like that. So I, I put 10 acres and I put 10,000 square feet just for this. I just, that was my gut when I read it, looking at it tonight, listening, that's what I just marked on the paper. I, but I, I don't know, you know, it all, it all fits together and also with a suitable land area, which gave me a little bit of heartburn. I, the unit separation gave me a little bit of heartburn. Like I, like I think to your point, Mark, is it for the people there or is it for the neighbors? I, I don't know. It didn't make a lot of sense. But I, I was for, um, and then I also upped the minimum from 20 units, I mean, the max, um, from 20 to 40. So I had 10, I had 10 acres, 10,000 square feet. Maybe that's high, I don't know. I'm curious to hear about Lawson's view, because I remember you said something to me, Lawson, that stuck with me, where you said, you know, if you spread it out, you, you know, you, you kind of rather sort of centralize the impact and not spread it out. So then, you know, you're, when you're increasing that maximum density, I get it, you're, you're maybe trying to limit the ability of someone to do it at all, but you're also spreading out the impacts. I don't know if 10,000 makes sense either, but I, I, but I did increase from, from five to 10 acres, the minimum.
That's the minimum proposed by C T R, the five acres.
Correct, yeah. I mean, we, what, what do we, do we have any now at all? We don't, right?
No, no, and we discussed it last February and, uh, the board didn't want to go there.
Yeah, I guess my, I, I guess I, I just, it would, I, I feel like it wouldn't be good to have a lot of little tiny campgrounds popping up everywhere, onesie twosies. I, I don't know.
And that, that is something to consider. I mean, that's happening, uh, with these hip camp sort of things, so.
I, I, I do find there's some irony that we have a 40,000 square foot requirement for residents. We have problems, problems with, with affordable housing in this community. And, and we have a pretty high restriction as to what you need to put up a house. Well, suddenly we're going to let a lot of small residences on much smaller acreage and, and I, I think, and we've heard this argued by a number of people in the public. It sort of resonates with me. We, we have a housing situation, but we're letting this happen commercially. Um, to the extreme. I mean, I, it's a balancing fact, but I, I think there's a, a factor that we, we should keep that in mind.
So in regards to campgrounds and the minimum acreage, do you have an idea there, Jeff?
Well, I, I would go for a higher requirement of acreage and, or higher. Well, I, I would go for a higher requirement of acreage and, or higher area required per campsite. So, you know, we're not treating red transient residents with housing that our own residents can't do themselves to live year-round. I mean, we do have a problem in this community, and I'm not saying we can address it here.
Yeah, yeah. I understand, and I don't think you're gonna find anybody in disagreement with that.
Right.
I'm just trying to move the conversation along here into minimum acreage. I mean, I looked at, I didn't now, but I did look at certain other towns similar to ours back last February when we were discussing this, and I think it went from, there were, a lot of towns have minimum sizes, two acres, maybe five acres. I think Lemoine is twenty acres. Five acres sounds, is what CTR is recommending. It sounds sensible to me, ten acres, I, I'm not gonna argue with that. I don't know.
Awesome. Curious to hear what you think.
Yeah, I don't, I find myself not feeling very strongly about minimum acreage size. I, I feel like sort of density and unit separation and buffers, they're like, you know, end up being the things that I care about more. I don't think I'm gonna like fight it vehement. I'm not gonna try to convince you guys otherwise, but I find myself not very, like, not that opposed to lots of small ones as like necessarily, assuming that they meet all the other performance standards that we've got, and that if somebody wanted to have a one-acre site with whatever the right density is that...
From one acre, you could have, right now, you could have one.
Right, I think that I'm not quite, I, I don't think I'm on board with the thirty thousand square foot per site density. I think that, I think they could be denser than that. That's where I, that's where I stand on the minimum site size question.
So does somebody want to make a motion, or we're gonna kick, kick this one down the road again, too?
I think Brett's brought up some interesting things for us to think about, as...
I do, too.
And I think we're gonna make a motion, lock into something. I think we should take a look at what CTR has proposed and work around the line, some of the things we've heard from our fellow board members tonight as to the pluses and minuses of larger and smaller acreages. I mean, I hear what Lawson's saying, I don't mind small ones, but then it was also said you don't want a whole bunch of patchwork, you know, two acres campgrounds over the island, over our town. So to do the balance here, I think we all have to take some time to sort of feel what works.
Fine, fine. That sounds wise. Maximum number of campsites. So it's something we wanted to address now. Well, we all have some homework to do for our next meeting, by the way.
And this is sort of specific for a, for a, for the campground application, but I'm wondering if this is the right moment to bring up questions about, like, do we want to start thinking about Tremont and a maximum number of campsites in the town of Tremont? And I, I, I mean, I don't know if it's okay with the board. I'd be curious to hear from Attorney Spencer about, like, ways in which to write an ordinance that applies not just to one, sort of places in application in the context of the whole town. It's something we mentioned briefly the last time. Maybe that's tangent, tangential, Mark, and so maybe you don't wanna go there right now.
Lawson, let me remind you, we're on a tight schedule here. If we're gonna get something to selectmen and get on the warrant for the town meeting, you know, we're gonna have, there are gonna be some things that we're gonna have to discuss later.
Let's, let's kick that one down the road and think about...
Way down the road.
That sounds great. I appreciate that.
What, what I did, again, I, I wrote ten acres for the minimum, I wrote ten thousand feet for the density, and what that gets you is, assuming that's a perfect site, the, the maximum you can have on that site would be, would be forty units. I know they have twenty. And so I put forty. It just felt like that would be the maximum that you could have for that, for the minimum site. I also felt that it would be, it's, it's, it's a little less than, you know, look, I'm just kind of going by feel here, but the, you know, AWL, it started out at whatever it started out at. I looked at the size of, of the one here in the corner by me, I looked at the one on the backside. It felt like twenty was too low, it felt like fifty was sort of too high. I stuck it at forty, and again, it also, the math kind of worked with the other two things I had done. I'll just throw it out there, we can think about it and come back next meeting.
Okay, Brett, would you mind? Would you mind? Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Brett, can I ask you?
Yeah.
Are you saying forty is a maximum size for any campground, even if they have a hundred acres?
You know, that's, I did, because I, I also felt, well, do we really want a hundred-acre campground, you know?
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I, I, at least my gut was, I didn't wanna, personally, I didn't want a bunch of onesie twosies. I guess I also didn't want, you know, on the flip side, I didn't, unless I didn't feel like, but the feedback we heard, we didn't want massive pieces of land being used, and so the forty is gonna be a sort of natural, and just economics, I mean, you're not gonna wanna, you're not gonna wanna put more units on a hundred acres. This isn't gonna work out for you economically. So I don't even know if there's a hundred acres available, but, but, but yes, that's, to answer your question, Jeff, yes.
Okay, no, no, I, I just, it's a good point, I was just trying to work it out.
Brett, would you mind?
Now, what I don't know, I don't know, like, I'm not an accountant, so I don't know, like, the four, I don't know if that means that no one's ever gonna do it, because you can't make money on forty units. I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, at a certain point, you know, you, you could have standards that become a de facto ban on campgrounds themselves. Economically viable to even do it, and, and so then you might as well just have a ban on campgrounds.
I felt like twenty probably was a little too low. I don't know that you could, I just don't know. You know, but, but yeah, that's, that's where I ended up.
Okay, if you don't mind, with all your figuring there, maybe put it down on paper and send it to John for inclusion or packets if you ever, if you ever feel like it. Wow, look at that. He's already done it. Man, that guy's good. Okay, so we're kicking that one down the road, too, for now. Setback. Here's one. We, we, if you remember, we had a twenty-five-foot setback. We increased it to fifty, and it was approved by voters in May, and that's where it is now. We see that CTR is recommend, recommending a hundred. I don't know.
Feels high.
Pardon? Jeff, I couldn't, that's what you said.
Did you say setback is buffer zone around the whole campground?
Setback is for property loan.
Yeah, all the property loans.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think fifty feet is fine.
I tend to agree, because it's back, I mean, I, what you're talking about here is either sight or noise, right? And if the buffer, if the buffering is working, if you, if they're complying with that, that shouldn't be an issue at fifty feet. And so then you get to the noise component, and I, I don't know, I just don't know how much you're gonna hear fifty feet away. I don't know. It just feels like a lot. It feels like you're, you're chewing into a lot of the potential. You know, if you've got a ten-acre parcel, assume that's the minimum, and you've got a hundred-foot boundary around the whole thing, that doesn't leave you a lot in the middle to play with.
Yeah, this is a tough one. You know, I, I think, you know, twenty-five feet was ridiculous, I agree. Fifty feet isn't really that much either.
No, it's not.
I'm looking at my sort of plot lines and just thinking about my own property and what, what a hundred feet feels like. And I don't know, maybe I'm the outlier again, but I actually feel like a hundred feet is a, would be a great buffer. And, and I guess the other thing that I'm reflecting on is that our buffering standards are pretty tricky to, 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 to enforce, like, in terms of the trees and like planting evergreens, whereas a hundred feet, like, you can see that on a site plan. That's something that the planning board could look at and say, yes, either there is a campsite in that, you know, a tent in that spot, or there's not a tent in that spot. I'm not sure that I would exclude the buffering from the suitable land area. So that's a different sort of, we aren't there yet, but I do like the idea of a hundred-foot buffer.
So do I.
Sounds like we're, it sounds like we're not ready to make a motion on this tonight either. You in agreement, folks?
I'm not at a hundred. I can be convinced at seventy-five, I suppose. I just feel like, you know, again, I think it's down to sight or noise, and I think that, you know, the, the buffering standards take care of that. I know they were tricky, but they're not unworkable, and we saw how they worked, you know, at least with it, it'd be well. I just feel like, you know, a hundred feet around the property is, you, you just a big chunk, but I could be in at seventy-five. Or we can table it.
I'll make a motion. A buffer, suggest a buffer zone of seventy-five feet, setback.
Setback of seventy-five feet, that's a motion, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I hope you will.
I hope you will. I wanted a hundred, Brett.
You guys could compromise there, what's I did. Anyway, a motion is second on the table to have a setback of seventy-five feet for campgrounds, increasing the current one from fifty feet, an additional twenty-five feet. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
It's getting late, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Lawson?
Yes.
Okay, myself, yes, that's five to zero. Okay. Okay. Do we want to call it a night? The only other thing that I had written down, and you probably have your own ideas, but this looked at, it was a five thousand square foot minimum that we have now. Do we want to increase that or whatever? And maybe we even talked about that a little bit briefly, so call it a night. We've got homework to do for the next meeting. Don't forget, look at your calendars and think about, we're gonna need an additional meeting as well as a public hearing in February. The second, the Tuesday, the twenty-second will be out, because that's the selectmen's meeting because of the holiday on the twenty-first. But you know, we, we don't necessarily have to meet on a Tuesday either, remember that. Okay? Anything else, anybody?
I'll move to adjourn. Do, do we need to set the next meeting?
Set the date for the next meeting, yeah, and that, and a public hearing. Oh, we did, already did for the public hearing, too. Set the date for the next meeting, and, and whether it should be by Zoom, which I believe it should be at this point.
I'm sorry, did you say that we've set a meeting for the, a, a time for the public hearing?
I, I, I probably did say public hearing, excuse me, for the pointy head.
Oh, for pointy head, yes.
Yes, pointy head, yes. So a motion to set the date for next meeting?
So moved.
At six o'clock, I assume?
Yeah, by Zoom. Complying with COVID restrictions and regulations.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to adjourn, or set the date for the next meeting, heading ahead of myself, February eighth, six o'clock, by Zoom. All in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five, zero. Now a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion is second on the table to adjourn. I'm gonna get some discussion, so I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson? Are you sure, Lawson?
I am sure, thank you.
Okay, myself, yes, as well, five, zero. Okay, good night, folks, thanks, and thanks to members of the public as well. Stay tuned, see you around.
Thanks, bye.